She is back to the room.
Is she doing okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I just got the text from her that she's back.
It's 5:32 on August 20th, 2024. I'd like to call this regular town board meeting to order. Kramer's here, Ferguson.
Here.
Coops.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you for coming for this executive session. We don't have anybody in yet. I've, they maybe don't even, didn't even notice the change because this just happened at 5 o'clock last night, so. Um, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Call for changes. Um, there might be a few things as far as, um, let's see. I don't know, engineer's right under there, so we're good on that. Um, I don't.
I do have one correction.
Okay.
So, oh wait, not for that, never mind, not for the agenda, sorry.
Not for the agenda, okay. Anybody else have anything? Yes.
On this. Where did it go? Update on initiative measure 28.
Mm-hmm.
Are we doing the first reading, the first and final? No?
We haven't done anything yet.
I just seen it in here and it had a resolution and I thought if it's not advertised.
It was just an example, and we got more information from the South Dakota Municipal League because there was some question on whether that was, if it went against constitutional law. And we've got an explanation for that, so.
Okay.
We're gonna be really hurt without that.
Yeah, very hurting without that, yes.
Faster we can get it out there, so people understand that better. Okay, that makes sense. I was just gonna say it's measure 28, not resolution number.
Yeah, no, it's not a resolution.
All right, anybody else? Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
I make a motion to accept the agenda as it reads.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion carried. Meeting protocol, you know, I always just say, please be nice. Uh, consent cal- calendar, approval of the August 6 meeting minutes?
Okay, that's where I have a change, sorry. So under rule call in the minutes, that first line, it should say Tuesday, August 6, not Tuesday, July 16.
Okay. Anything else from anybody else?
I just wanna apologize for my executive, or my trustee input. I forgot you guys don't publish that, that's why I wanted it. Set and done, but since it doesn't get published, it doesn't really matter.
Doesn't really matter, okay, yep, no problem. All right, anybody else? I take a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes with the change that Terry made.
Okay, do I have a second?
Come on, Kelly, you're here tonight.
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye, motion carried, thank you. Conflict of interest, if you have one, please declare it at the time, not now. Executive session. I need a motion to enter into executive session at 5:36.
I make a motion that we enter into executive session at 5:36.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second's been made, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Sorry, Joan, I don't, I really don't know, it'll be at least a half hour.
Okay, thank you.
Lock the doors and then.
Yeah, I'll open it up.
Lock all the vaulters in.
Right, push along as fast as you can.
Oh my God. Yes.
And Burke besides.
Who are you supposed to sit in the car with the air conditioning on?
He sits in here in the DC.
Thanks.
Jesus.
Pipe stand in the shit, damn the pipe stand.
Well, you should've said something, Chuck, I would've let you sit in my car. So, do we need to do a motion to end executive session?
That is correct. At 6:30.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Motion's been made and seconded to come out of executive session. We're sorry it took so long and that it is so hot outside.
I hope I lost 10 pounds.
Maybe I should've shown up. You're only 80 pounds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, thank you, board. So, just so the public knows, we are down to, um, item 7 on the agenda, which is the engineer. So, Anthony?
Yep. So. First discussion is the proposal for the water wastewater treatment plant purchase agreement. Proposal.
Okay. Yeah, a little bit of.
So it, um, I think it's more in your hands, that one. Um, I, I can do, what I can do on my side. So, uh, because I know this takes a little time to get this agreement together, work out if you're gonna take the, take his financing option, which basically is giving, um, six months of interest only payment. Because it takes time to move that thing over and all that, and that's pretty typical from like an SRF program, I told him, usually it's a year, but. Um, he did like six months interest only and then, um, then two and a half years of a payment, which would be kind of equivalent to the payment at 5% or 6% or whatever. And then, um, uh, a balloon payment in year four. So that gives you time to, to maybe take a better payment, annual payment, and then refinance potentially when the interest rate's better, because it's pretty high right now. So that would be, I think, if it pencils, that that's the better of the two options. The other option is to take off the full amount from our loan that we're asking from the bank to do the installation costs, just, just pay for the, for the equipment costs and the installation costs. I think Terry looked into both options and once we have that kind of, we can decide, are we taking his financing or are we, um, gonna go just, you know, paying it and doing a bank loan, one and done kind of thing. While that's happening, so what I've been doing to try to keep things moving forward, because I'd like to have this treatment plant moved over here, installed and operational by Halloween. Because on October 31st, we go into the winter period where we're not allowed to irrigate and there's not really a lot of evaporation happening. So, um, I have been making them test the equipment, so turn it on, run water through it, wastewater through it, and check the pumps, check the motors. Um, I even have the, there's a software update in the control panel I'm making them do. So that, that thing's basically operational over there before we even disassemble it and bring it over here. So that way, I don't have any issues when I get here with it, not, you know, having to work out bugs. So I'm working out the bugs under their dime, knowing, telling them that you gotta, we gotta be able to kick the tires before we buy this thing. So, they're, they've been, they've been getting that all going, so. In the next week or two, we should be able to have somebody, I can take video or you can have somebody else come to see that operational, um, just so that somebody from the town has seen it and seen. You know, that's what we expect it to do when it gets here. That way we can hold the contractor we hire accountable for the move, right? So, that's basically where we're at with the wastewater treatment plant. I think basically you guys are just working out language and stuff. I sent a message and I copied you back, Terry, saying that, um, we, you and I talked about what's the payment, you know, like it says exhibit, whatever.
Refers to an exhibit.
Yeah, it doesn't exist, so I said, can you put the exhibit together?
Okay.
And I kinda gave them what we're expecting to see.
That'll help.
I haven't jumped into Waterworth yet, so what I will do is I'll jump into Waterworth and I'll run that. And that way I can tell them what the numbers say from Waterworth. So he doesn't have to try to come up with his own calculator, because that thing will do it all for you.
Yeah, and I had put some numbers in there.
Yeah, okay, so you might even be in your scenario, so I can even look at that. So, I'll try to get him to create that exhibit. The only other exhibit I think that needs to go with it is what are we getting? Like the detailed breakdown of the inventory, we have an inventory list, he sent me an Excel. I think after we kick the tires on the stuff, there might be some things we think of. Like maybe there's a buck booster transformer or something that needs to go in the deal and to make this thing work, and I'm sure he'll be willing to give it up because it's, there's nothing there connected to it anymore, right? So, so that, that might just be like the devil, the details there that can delay us. You know, we gotta wait for something, we have to pay for it. I don't want, I want everything that we need coming on that shipment. To put it in and go, so. The power, the service, because there's no, there's not a lot of power out there right now at the lagoons. So, uh, Chuck has been working with, uh, Black Hills to come up with that. I actually communicated with Rory, I have an Excel of everything in that treatment plant. It's power consumption. So how much amps it draws when it kicks on, it's a full load amp, on every single piece of item. So if every single thing kicked on, how much, how much do we need if that happens? So, so I told him we need a 400 amp, three-phase, 240, 480 volt, 60 hertz service. We need the cost of that, and I wanna have our SRF loans money paid for it.
Okay.
So it's gonna be, it's in our, it's actually already in our lagoon design drawings. But it just says new service, so. That, we'll need, that detail, we need to add to the spec, so. So that's, that's basically it, so that'll come. And what we can do is, is that we can reimburse ourselves if, I mean, we should've closed on the SRF loan by then. So it should be a midpoint that we can just draw from the SRF. But that would be something where we have to pay Black Hills for the materials, it's just the way things work with the service. And then have it, have it brought to the inside of the fence of the lagoons. So. And that easement recorded, so that's, that's where we're at, treatment plant. Um, let's, you have any questions? Okay, I'm gonna shift over to the water then.
How are we gonna approve this agreement and solve it? Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, no, so yeah, you'll eventually have to sign that agreement, that'll come probably when it's all hammered out. I'm sure Catherine will take a look at it.
Something I'd like to do this, is this a pretty much cash and carry in the warranty?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's tough to hold him liable, there's a manufacturer that we can, that we can turn to. Um, but it's probably beyond any warranty period. They do have branded parts in it, so, you know, I think the big thing is, is that he's warranting that it works now.
Right.
And as soon as it's, leaves the prop, the premises and it comes here, I mean, the contractor's gonna, we're gonna be looking at the contractor's insurance to say, this thing worked, sign off on it, here it is, and then bring it over, so.
Right, so the contractor at the time of, the contractor that's dismantling it also be the one assembling it?
Yeah, he's gonna have to be involved on both sides, maybe not so heavily involved, like labor-wise in installation, but he's gonna need to be able to say, yeah, this thing was all put back together the way I took it apart.
Gotcha, and you're verifying that it functions where it's sitting now?
Yeah, I mean, my obligation is to commission it, so once it's put back together mechanically and electrically and structurally, then there's a whole biological component to it that's my job, that they leave and they say, yeah, the motors all run and everything's set up right, elevations all are checked, and this thing is ready to go. And then I start the process of creating, I, I create the biofilm, which takes weeks to build. So I build the biofilm by running lagoon water through the, the treatment system and circulation. So I don't, I don't discharge, because I wouldn't meet permits from day one. And I build up the biofilm on the, on the drum. And now when I'm testing it and it passes, then I turn the valve and I, I can discharge it.
So you gotta go in there, swab the tank, make sure the biofilm's.
No, you can see it, it's millimeters thick, so it's not very thick. So, um, but there is ways to measure the thickness, but it's, it's not, it, all that matters is the tests come out, so.
Okay, anybody else have any questions about sewer? All right, go ahead, water?
Okay, so we completed our water model, the townwide water model. And so, um, this was pretty important to justify decisions or recommendations for you to make decisions on, um, the benefit of putting a tower on the top, um, at what size booster pumps need to be so that we can improve the, the pressure. And so, I think I can skip through the verbiage, but you can read it. A lot of it's just explaining how we, uh, how we model things. But I can just go to the map, there's some color maps in the back, I don't know if you got color. Or not.
No.
So, in the color maps, you can see that, uh, their color coded based on pressure. And so, blue is 45 PSI to, just under, it's 79.9, so 80 PSI. So that's good, that's what we want. And this is the existing conditions. So, under 45 PSI is not good. So, and it's in our ordinance that we maintain our pressures between 45 and 100. So, the, this part of the town is fine, but this part of the town has issues, right? The west side. And so, and obviously we stop here in terms of our service, so whatever is going on in this line is really just, it doesn't matter, it's just a part of the system. So, um, nobody's feeding off of that, so it doesn't matter. But, starting there at the Heartland Storage Dollar General, um, you know, that's where we're, we're at these pressures in, you know, 20 to 45. And then, obviously we do have some areas here that are, go below 20. Because there's some elevation here as you go up towards the cemetery, um, and up by the tower there. And that's where Chuck's been finding, trying to put booster pumps in these particular service, services to get water to, because it just naturally won't get there. Now. This is the proposed condition. Well, this is the condition when we build the tank at the top, when the tank is not being filled. So it's at 50%, so the tank's half full, that's what the requirement of our design manual states in South Dakota. We need to look at it 50% full, we need to look at it when it's filling. Two different conditions, that are, that are the worst-case conditions. As you can see, the blue stays the same, but to make this work, I had to divide our system into two pressure zones. Which has never acted like that before, which is why we've struggled a lot with the booster pumps that we have. Because what you need to do is connect that booster station straight to Main Street and then put a valve there on Main Street in front of the school so that everything south of that, everything east of that is the low pressures on and everything west of that's the high pressures on. When you do that automatically, immediately you go back up to about 45. So, creating two zones. It still leaves a swath right here, as, as I kinda alluded to. That's, that's dipping down below, it's not red, right, but it's still a swath. That swath I have not modeled with an additional 40 feet on the existing tank. But when I do, that'll turn blue as well. But I eliminated all the problem here. So now, everything over here with the truck stop and, or the gas station and all these commercial properties and everything like that, it's all, it's all service good. Now, here's a situation where the tank's filling, so the way the tank fills is, I'm gonna reuse, because the pumps in the booster station we have now are good. So I'm just gonna reutilize them to fill the tank up on the hill there, on the north side of town. And then replace those with the proper-sized booster pumps. When I do that, for the first time, the town gets green, which is above 80. So, this whole area becomes 80 to 100 PSI. So that's why I said we probably need to tell residents in this area that when we make these improvements, they need to be ready for that pressure. So things aren't blowing up, so. And of course, this stays the same and we still have that issue of yellow, you know, in that diagonal through town. So, this project solves that much problems. So. And then, what you can't see, because those are just pressure maps, is you can't see the fact that we have 120 to hopefully 180,000 gallons of water in that tank up there in reserve in, in the event of a fire. So that's something we modeled in the model, but, uh, this map doesn't necessarily illustrate. The pressure would still remain that high. You do have pressure drops, but they're allowed to drop to 35 to 25 PSI during a fire. But that's only for two hours, so.
Okay, very good.
So Custer County has a copy of this, so what I'm asking them is to allocate our grant money for the tank. Just a case for it.
So the Custer County meeting to everybody is tomorrow. And Anthony will be making a present, presentation to them. And I will be there also to, to hear, to, to.
Oh, you're.
Support, yeah, and I try to go to all of them.
Oh, good, good.
Uh-huh, it's, it's proved to be beneficial to our town if we attend all those meetings.
Yeah.
So.
That's great.
Yeah, so.
Perfect.
Any questions from anybody?
Terry's mud.
Terry's mud, huh? Okay, we don't need any, any approvals right now, just everything's good, just, just information, good.
Yeah, next meeting, some stuff.
Okay. Thank you, Anthony, very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And Chuck's all on board with that, you've been training him and he's been training you and you've been working together well and.
Yeah, he just, when we tried to get up that hill, I went up the steep side and he said, stick head in, four-wheel drive and go. That was his input.
Okay, you're probably point on it.
Exactly.
Very good, okay, thank you, Anthony.
Thanks.
All right. That brings us to planning and zoning. And they're both pending, so we'll just.
Well, I thought we got the okay on that one for us from Whitney Street. I thought Anthony was gonna say some tough faces on that. Was he not, Chuck?
What's that?
The, uh, water line over there on Whitney Street?
Yeah, that six-inch water line with, uh, only, we've looked at the maps on that before, that was approved by DMNR a couple, three weeks ago. It was again. And Anthony is still kicking around the sewer system over there.
So we're kinda gonna just wait till next meeting and he'll?
Pretty much, I thought he might touch on that a little while he was here, but he didn't. Didn't get the, needed to visit about that a little bit, but the water line wasn't approved, so. And working on a town, I have to apologize because, you know, when we finally got moved back, so we've been trying to hit some of the critical points that need to be addressed and, um.
Okay. Okay, we'll move forward then. That brings us to claims. Uh, that makes, I see the Cheryl Nagabauer for Prairie Dog Control. Did you call her to tell her we still had?
There was one survivor so far.
Okay.
I could use the Winchester crap on him, but.
I, I just don't think you better. I think you better.
Put the silence around.
Yeah.
Still waiting for a permit, aren't you, to ask for a permit?
But it takes two.
Two Winchesters or two?
Two.
Two doses of poison.
I don't know, but we have more dogs.
Oh, well, yeah, it'll find one, trust me.
Oh, yeah.
They always do, so, that's why I wanted to tell you. And the reason we know there's some alive is because when I was reading water meters, they poked their little heads out and the dogs wanted to go play. My dogs wanted to go play with that dog and, you know, didn't happen, but yeah. It, they were sure chatting back and forth at each other, so. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the claims?
Is this the annual fee for software?
Yes. That's that, the Waterworth was that $5,000 that we approved in the contract, and I paid it on the credit card, so that's why it's showing up there.
I make a motion that we approve the claims, as they.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, thank you. Okay, that brings us to law enforcement and abatements and complaints.
I have something on the law enforcement.
Yeah, okay.
As we talked about, maybe a speed monitoring sign. I've been from Custer to Florida, back to here to Rapid City today. On the phone. I, I've, I've talked to a gal about, uh, those flashing lights and he, I, the state, DOT will not do that. They do, will not do it. And because it's not on, on, couldn't be situated on the highway.
On the highway.
Yes, and so. A, a guy in Florida sent me some paperwork, but I couldn't copy their spreadsheets for some reason. So I gotta call him back in the morning and talk to him about that. But it, it's a movable one.
It's under, it's underneath that, right.
There it is, okay. It, they're movable, and so of course, you know, that'd be an added job probably on to public works, you know, not that they don't have anything to do.
Oh, they don't?
No. Anyway, uh, yeah, so I, I don't have the spreadsheet on it as far as, you know, any, any. And I even tried to get, Crystal's trying to print it, and she says, there's something wrong. They didn't send you the right, send it the right way, so. But I was kinda thinking that, you know, after we, maybe when we do the budget meeting, I'll have that information, we can talk a little bit more about whether or not. I, I think it would be a feasible thing. If we could so, you know, and it'll show the hotspots, you know, and so then we can move it or whatever. I, I really think that's a good design.
Okay, so, uh, we'll just put that in on budget talks and, uh, we'll get the rest of the information on that, that might be a real good. I like the idea that it's movable and changeable, that, that would be very nice. And that is for us, uh, one of those signs that says you are going this speed and the speed limit is such, um, to possibly help to slow down the traffic. And being movable, then we could put it from Ferguson to Whitney to school.
Yeah.
Yeah. And anyway, that's just the thought process, we'll be getting more information on that. Uh, we don't have a Custer County log, um. Do we have any other issues with law enforcement? They, they were here all during the parade and.
Very well, very well just about, and, uh, the other day we seen a, even a highway patrolman drive, drive down by, drove down by the house. And our, our little renter, of course they're moving, but now she's back on duty, so she's doing the night duty, so she's kinda.
Oh.
So she's back down.
Back to, oh, okay.
Yeah, she was sitting in my driveway the other day, other night, Sunday night late.
Using your driveway as a?
No, we were talking. I had their car come flying by and they whoop, oh, all of a sudden they put their brakes on, you know.
Oh, good.
So it's good, it, we have seen them. And I have complimented them on, it's good to see them, yes, it is.
All right, so that brings us to abatements and complaints. Things have, uh, done pretty well by the looks of the sheet here. As far as the complaints go, um, I'll go down the line, I think I have three of them. One, um, from Vicki Hendrickson, and first of all, I, I'd like to say that she had surgery today, she is out of surgery and doing well. I'll say that first off. Um, and that's, Donna got that information while we were in executive session, so that's wonderful. Her objection, her complaint is that, um, she had asked for her entire letter of resignation to be put in. in the minutes, printed in the minutes, in the Custer Chronicle, which is our official paper for all of our business. And, um, two or three things have actually gone on with that. She also complained that there was not a vote on it. Well, she should know that it has to go on the agenda, and it has to be proposed twenty-four hours beforehand to be put on an agenda. So although Terry did read the resignation letter, that was the only thing that could be done legally. It has to be done as on the agenda, which it is on the agenda under... Under which?
New business.
New business. But because it's a complaint, I wanted to bring this up now. So that is part of it. We couldn't. It is on the agenda to get that done. And as far as, um, wanting her complete resignation in the minutes, Terry did the research on that, and the research for posting this letter in our meeting minutes in the Custer Chronicle, this portion alone is a fifty-dollar bill. I personally don't believe it needs to be there. I think that it is on the website for anybody that listens to the meetings. First off...
So just, let me, so the fifty dollars was when she was at the prior meeting and went off for about fifteen, twenty minutes, and she had requested that be put in the minutes. And I'd asked Kent, and he said, "Just to put in there, for complete verbiage, please listen to the recording that's on the website." So, and that would have cost us around fifty dollars. Now, this one is a little shorter, and it'd only be about nine, it's like nine dollars.
Nine dollars, okay.
It's a little cheaper, but...
Sorry.
No, you're fine. I just didn't want to.
But that being said, I still don't think it needs to be published. It, like I said, they can, they can listen to it, they can read it, they can come up here and read it. And it was already in the Custer Chronicle. They made front page news by doing so. And so I just believe that it doesn't need to, but I suppose we probably do need a motion in that effect. So I will make a motion that it is not published in our Custer Chronicle minutes.
Well, second that for discussion.
Motion's made and seconded. Go ahead.
I think it would set a precedence. When anybody who wants something published in our minutes, you would be opening that door.
That door.
Exactly. And as a precedence, you've already slimmed down the amounts that you're publishing by not including trustee input. So I just don't, you know, following that pattern.
Okay. Anybody else?
If you publish it, you're gonna have to do it for all of them, or at least a board member.
Ken?
Also, I believe that per Robert's rules, which we are supposed to follow when we conduct our meetings, that the only thing that goes in the minutes is things that happen and what people said, but I don't believe documentation is required or even desired to be put into the minutes of the meeting. Is that clear, Kent?
Yeah, that's accurate, especially that type of documentation. If it's a, obviously ordinances and things like that, that's a whole different type of thing. But otherwise, having, referencing it, and I think it's going even a little bit beyond, but it's not unreasonable. We'll go ahead and reference that briefly, but second, any other comments? She had comments on this and this. Further, anybody interested in further information on that, just welcome to go to our site where it's posted or whatever that happens to be. So you provide an alternative, which you still don't have to, alternative medium to see.
Direct quote can be found on?
Yeah, so you provided a, you provided a reasonable means for anybody, any interested party to be able to locate that document. So you more than fulfilled your duties regarding statute requirements for minutes for minispelling.
So you're saying the document should be included?
Not in the, not in the minutes, no.
Not in the minutes, but so if they want to listen to it, they'd have to go back to the prior meeting where I read it, I guess is what I'm...
Yeah, I guess make reference to where people can find that.
Okay.
So if, but just like you say, anybody else who had comment? Yeah, board member Vicki Hendrickson attended her resignation and had comment regarding the reasons why. And those reasons can be found X, Y, Z.
Any other questions or comments about this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining.
One abstain, please. Motion has carried. Thank you. Um, the next one I have is from Connie Lemer, and she discussed this. Where are we on this, Chuck?
On the sewer issue?
Yes.
Well, one of the things that I observed was the venting on the house. And state regulations say that you should have one three-inch vent pipe, preferably by the master bathroom. And this house is old enough, back in the day when they put tuba tubes in the walls and skimped on everything. She has four vent pipes, and anything other than the three-inch main staff is supposed to be two-inch. Her vent pipes are inch and a half, so they're undersized to start with, and they're not tall enough. So the observation that I made, trying to eliminate issues that could be the cause, it's not saying it is. It's one of the things that I believe could have an effect because the pipes are sticking out of the roof about like this, and they should be much taller. I did observe that her furnace chimney is right there, and also a vent above, I believe, her kitchen. So there's not much, talking with Rural Water, Dan Ayers is the sewer side of the Rural Water, and he agreed one hundred percent that that should be looked at because he indicated that the sewer gas coming out of there could just whip right down either one of these vents and take it into the house. So trying to eliminate, one of the factors was to add on to these pipes, and I suggested that to her. I didn't feel that the town or myself could be held responsible for raising, bringing these stacks up. So, and there's also a kind of an access problem. You know, I talked to some of the neighbors around, and they don't seem to have a lot of problem with the sewer smell. So I think we'll smoke the mains, and what that does is any leaks that are in these systems, that smoke comes out. So, I mean, if she has a problem in the house, it'll fill the house full of smoke immediately. And this is a DMNR-approved smoke, and it's non, it doesn't, no harm, no foul, no nothing. It just gives you an idea. I have seen the smoke come right up out of the ground because there was a break in the sewer pipe. So Anthony and I talked about it a little bit, and that smoke system, the brand-new system is four or five hundred dollars. He indicated that we should have one. However, I tried to get Rural Water to come do that, and he had an operation, so he's got a commission. But he thought maybe he might get somebody else to run it and take care of it. So I've explained to Linda what difficulties we're having getting on the property and, you know, addressing the problem. So I think we're getting a handle on it. I mean, I think they've agreed to go ahead and extend the pipes, and if that cures the problem, goody-goody. If it doesn't, then we gotta look at something else.
Look through it, okay.
If that's one of the equations that I see could potentially cause the problem.
And they are going to take care of it themselves?
It's my understanding that they were gonna put additions on to them, but reluctantly. Don't think that's the problem, I say, well...
It's the first step.
Twenty bucks, we're ruling that problem out.
Exactly, yep.
So that's where that's at.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. We'll look forward to hearing the outcome of those things. The next complaint that I have is from J&amp;A Trucking, Orlie. And we have found out through some research that the state is, um... Does not do anything about the issues with the road, the dents in the road because of the heat and the weight of the truck. And it is from the state highway to private property. So we basically have absolutely nothing to do with it. And because of the complaint, I would like to ask that Donna and the town send an apology letter to her and thank her for her business, and that it will just move forward on that. Do I have an agreement from the board members on that?
Give me a second.
I would love a second.
Second.
Motion's been made by myself and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Um, the latest one that I got, actually, there was four, and now I seem to not have. It was about Weed's Gauntlet Ferguson, I think. What did I do with it? I have too much paperwork today.
It's on the big white sheets.
Oh, okay, thank you for that. And there is. I believe that was marked on the water bills, even that that was...
Chuck asked me if we'd put anything on, but we're also gonna put something else. I, well, we don't get our wa, he brings it home.
Yeah.
I don't know what it says.
What I mean to say is, when I read the meters, I noticed that, and I wrote it up as a problem also. And so these things will all be looked at, you know, and gone through and letters sent if needed.
It was probably the time. Did we put something on the water bill about the speeding? She's doing water bills tomorrow, and it'll be on there.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, yep.
Yep, speeding will be on that, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's it for complaints, abatements. That brings us down to the town attorney. Do you... Oh, it says town attorney position. Besides the position, do you have any other information first off?
With regard to the position, well, I was provided a copy of a, submitted or a proposal by, Terry sent it to me yesterday or the day before from Scott, Attorney Scott James, Southern Hills Law. I've only dealt with Scott on one issue. Didn't find any, you know, nothing stands out in my memory as him being someone who just was objectionable in any way. I think he's a decent guy. Actually, I have not met him personally before, but I think he'd make a, you know, a good town attorney, I think. I don't have any reason to say not, but he would, so it's put that way. With regard to that, though, he's, in his proposal, he does have a lot of litigation experience. One thing about that is that the town, if there is threat litigation, we're unlikely to turn that into a carrier. And they, and then the carrier selects a company that they typically, that they have do the litigation for them. Who've experienced that a number of times. So whether that would be all that helpful or not, you know, but it is, it's always nice to have that. He does have some expertise, I says, in grant, that involves some grant writing and something like. So I think if nothing else, I mean, I've submitted for the position and love to continue to help you all out. And I enjoy it, otherwise I wouldn't have proposed anything. But one thing I think I do bring to the table is the years of experience I have with the town. And in almost, in a lot of conversations, there are situations that, especially with municipalities, but in the unique experience with this town and the history, to be able to propose things or look at certain applications of things like various ordinances or mainly, and one of my fortes is tax increment finance districts, which are really the only serious economic growth mechanism that municipalities really have. And there's not a lot else you can do outside of the usual grants and loans. There's nothing else that I'm aware of. There's tax assessment districts, which are increasing property taxes on people. So that's really not a very, you know, positive thing to do. One thing about tax increment districts is it doesn't increase anybody's taxes. The growth that is created by new infrastructure, whatever, turning a hayfield into a subdivision, going from a thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars. Municipality, when they, any jurisdiction, county or municipality, when they do that, it captures all of that rather than just a tiny slice, which with the normal property tax amount would normally be. So that's just one thing, and there's ways to apply that. So I think that my experience brings a lot to the table away. I know you gotta be cost-conscious, conscious. Mr. James is a real reasonable two twenty-five an hour. And so the proposal that I had last week was basically a little bit of a blended situation where for, I proposed for twenty-seven fifty, twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars per month. That would provide ten hours of services, set meetings or whatever. And then anything after that would be three hundred an hour. My regular rate's three seventy-five. I've had, you know, just for other, usually for many other clients, including municipalities. But what I'd be willing to do is to lower the, a month of retainer to twenty-five hundred per month. That would be ten hours at two hundred and fifty dollars per hour. And then thereafter, lower from three hundred to two seventy-five per hour, which is one hundred dollars per hour less than my normal rate. I think that it stays competitive. It helps you watch your budget a little bit, but also, you know, I think I can do things oftentimes more efficiently because of my level of knowledge, specific to our community, this community. So that's pretty my, pretty much my way of my pitch at it. But I have nothing negative at all to say about Mr. James. I don't know him. I've only dealt with him once, and like a reasonable guy.
Okay, thank you, Kent. Uh, I did, so I can get everybody on board here. We've been looking for an attorney. And Mr. Hags and Mr. Jameses are the only two that were interested. We have had this on the agenda for several months, so it's given people enough time to come forward that are interested in it. Mr. James, I did speak to. I did tell him that we may, the board may want to meet him and speak to him too, if that is what the board desires. We'll make that happen. His resume, did they all have it, or, okay, so you all had it, you looked at it. He has not actually the technical municipal experience, but has county. He's been an attorney for a county and attorney for the tribe, a tribal party near here. And, um, and if you think we have conflict, they have more. So he has the experience with conflict, I guess is what I'm trying to tell you. Although we are trying to put all the conflict behind us and move forward in this town, I do appreciate that he has that experience. I would like to make this decision tonight. It's been ongoing long enough. We've had given other attorneys the ample amount of time to come forward if they're interested. And so I would like to get this done tonight. However, if the board would like to, um...
We need to have a board meeting. I think it should have been discussed in executive session as to...
We need to have a board meeting. I think it should've been discussed in an executive session as to how our feelings are.
How our feelings are, okay. Um, how does everybody else feel about that?
Yeah, I could, I could wait a little bit longer, I think.
Okay, Shannon?
I don't mind anything.
Okay, alright, yes sir.
Would you consider comment from the office?
I would, please.
Well, you may change your mind. My name is Greg Burney. I had no idea what was on your agenda this evening. The reason I speak up, I happen to have been acquainted with Kent for...
Twenty-five years.
Yeah, twenty-some years. All I wanted to say was that having served for ten or twelve years as the city attorney of Sturgis, that I think, um, it is quite accurate to say that municipal law is a little different in county or representing the state agency. And I think Kent also made a good point, or I think it's a good point for the board to consider that you're not necessar- a town is not necessarily best served by someone who can present themselves as an aggressive litigator. As you, I see people nodding their heads. Sometimes it's a matter to go to speak with someone and sort out the problem and say, well, okay, now how can we, how can we fix this in the board? So, I, that's all I wanted to say. I think those are good points to consider.
Thank you Greg, I appreciate that. I knew I recognized you, but I could not put a name to you.
No.
So, thank you for coming forward.
Glad you stuck with it, couldn't put a name.
Um, I, so, I would like to make a motion, and, and here's another thing I forgot to say. He also has experience, he lives in the neighborhood. And it's a personal belief of mine that we need somebody out of the neighborhood. And just, and I feel that way also about our finance officers. I, I think it's better that they're not living right here either, because I think it makes it harder for them. And, sorry Shannon.
That's offensive.
I, I don't mean to be offensive at all.
What about border trustees?
Yeah, no, that can't be legally. I, I really did not mean to be offensive at all. It is, um, I do remember some of the things that you went through as being in the town that made it a little more difficult for you and for some of the other finance officers. However, that is my opinion, my opinion only. Um, I would, if you feel that we should...
I still think we should have a discussion with the board members.
Okay, would you like to have that right now? I hate to put the board through another or at the end of the meeting tonight, maybe?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just...
Is everybody else alright with that? Okay?
I just think that...
You have some things to say, obviously. Okay, very good. We'll put that at the end of the meeting then, if we will have another executive session about attorneys then. And, um, hopefully we'll still put a, you know, and still put some quick closure to this. So, as our attorney, do you have anything else legal in, in our...
Nothing, uh, I'm, just as an observation from, in a historical context, Anthony with Vanish really never fails to just impress the hell out of me. I mean, if, he's all up, looking at all the options, taking this, that, that, here's how it works, here's how it can work. Oh, and by the way, you might wanna look at that grant. I mean, I, I, I think he's just what this town has needed. Uh, and very, uh, dynamic professional services.
I second that. I noticed that right away at the end of the board.
Yep, I think we all feel that way.
If you can understand and... Yeah.
Yep, and, uh, I just want, would like to say that we can, uh, basically thank Mr. Jerry Stiles for that. When he was our board president and he did an excellent, he found us an excellent engineer, and I do appreciate that. Yep, so.
One other thing too, Madam Chair, is that, um, with regard to Mr. James, because of his, uh, type of experience and because of his lower hourly rate and so forth, I'm perfectly open to working with him on projects, since he has a background in certain areas. To have him, uh, take on certain special counsel projects that, like grant writing or something, uh, whatever else, uh, there may be application for that, but I have absolutely no problem working with someone like that.
I guess, and I did not quite explain that either. He has been the attorney for Paramount Point. And so, he has been here, um, with discussions where that was concerned with not only water projects, the well, and with, um...
He does live in Paramount.
He lives in Paramount Point. And, um, annexation issues. So, he has, um, I, I butted heads a little bit with the town, I think, where things like this are concerned. Um, by working for them and when we wanted to have them annexed, when they wanted to be annexed, actually is how that all worked. They came to us wanting to be annexed, so, um, anyway, off that subject, thank you very much Kent. I appreciate that. Um, I do have, this is not on the agenda anymore, or am I miss- did I miss it somewhere?
Oh, no, I didn't put it on.
Well, it is... Not a complaint, but a request kind of, so I, I'm gonna go ahead and bring it up here Kent, is that alright? I know that it's not technically on the agenda, but we received a letter from Rick Mills as president of Hermosa Connects. Okay, um, basically they're asking for a, um, where, sorry.
Transcript.
A transcript, tran- transcript of, um, our, our minutes. And we don't do that, um, but they heard that they were a topic of discussion at a board meeting, uh, previous to this one, and they wanna know, um, exactly what was said. And like I said, we do not do transcripts. Um, they can listen to the minutes. I, I think we were talking about the, um, the fair that they had, the Hermosa, what do they call?
Vendor fair.
Yeah, the vendor fair, and, um, I think we were discussing, um, things that we had seen or heard. And nothing was voted on or, no motions were made concerning any of it. Just that, um, uh, we would be, um, looking at it in the future, which we are, we had talked about that before, that we would be looking at our vendors permit, um, and...
And they knew that.
And they knew that, so, um, I just would like to inform the board that that was asked for, and we do not do that. And they have the ability to listen to it online as any of us do. Yes, Cal?
I'd just like to make the point that there's any number of software tools that can be used to upload an audio file like the one that they would download from our website, and that could generate a transcript for them. So, it's not a service that the town needs to provide, 'cause there's so many, I'm sure, free options out there as well.
Right.
Okay, thank you Cal. Alright, uh, that brings us to Public Works. With a smile on his face.
Well, on the, first thing on there of course is, um, I can't find it. It's right above, okay. Um, streets, yeah, and, and then Boa Ho Bob getting the gravel brought in. I chose to use peat lane rock instead of some of the surrounding, uh, pits due to the quality of the gravel. Probably peat lane rock is probably the best in the state of South Dakota. And there's very little difference in cost, so I've kinda decided that's where we're gonna get it gravel. Lining somewhat up to bring it in has been a little bit, everybody's just horribly busy. I mean, it's just crazy. So, everything I've tried to accomplish is a week to ten days out on everything. And, uh, so, I'm still working on it. I should have a much better report right next to me.
Okay.
I have not gotten with Shannon to go around and look at the damage there is on the streets and stuff at this point yet to, and just for a bit.
And when do you think that might happen? Are you gonna get a little less busy when you get your equipment back home? That you think maybe, um, the first week in September that could happen, or?
We could very well address some. We have a stop sign to put up and some, uh, on the list of honeydews, you know, that's gonna happen. Summer has gone away from us during the street, uh, the school lights on this morning. School is starting. I don't think it hurts to have them a little bit aware of the fact that you can throw down a day or two early before the school actually, actually starts. And that's one of the issues like, uh, in Fergies and subdivision, there are children that walk to school. And with these speeders, it's, it's just an accident waiting to happen. You know, and as the weather still stays nice, they're out walking at night and it's, it's horrible. I mean, if you could see what goes on, you'd be horrified. I mean, they just act like the house is on fire or something, you know, it's just no rainers. So, that's about it on the streets. Uh, we do have a couple of things to... I installed a new sign on Fairmount Place. Person that complained about that, thought it was spray painted, it wasn't, it was just faded white. So, that got replaced last week. Street lines, we've got a couple that are out and they have been notified, um, RIA.
Okay.
They're, they're two, three weeks out. I mean, they're crazy. And some of this stuff was cut during the boring and one thing or other, so it's a matter of, I need to get to them and repair them and then they can come back and hook them up again. Cause they're hooked directly to the transformer, so there's no shut offs. They're hot.
They're hot.
And that line gets cut and we have to have them remove it from the transformer box so it isn't hot to be able to do repairs. The other thing, I guess, is water and Anthony, I'd have to tell the board that it has been a real pleasure working with Anthony. He's, uh, very conscientious and, uh, I think he has the town's interest at heart. And make no mistake, he's not doing it for nothing, but, you know, most anybody that's... So, I worked very closely with him on this treatment plant. Cal has been on board. And, uh, it's not gonna be easy moving, I think, down there. And, uh, we discussed the avenues on what to do, how to take care of that problem. And, uh, it's gonna be a great deal for us. I mean, it's, it's gonna solve a lot of problems. And it's like Anthony said, you know, if, if we could get that thing up in operation sooner than later, it would really, really change the scenario that we have with he and our. We've got a timeline and, uh, when we're almost to close, it's time to come. And, um, a couple of issues that, that he and I have looked at and I pointed out some things that he had no idea existed. So, he's using that information and one thing or others, um, is my suggestion months and months ago of the tower situation. And, uh, we looked at the land, Cal was there, helped where to put it. Accessibility and how to tie it into the system and, uh, it's pretty detailed. I mean, what he's proposing is a good idea and it's pretty, and it's also looking at the future, you know. I mean, to just do something rectify the problem right now is not a good idea. I mean, you have to project what's gonna happen. And one of the things that comes into play too with this, this system, I assume that my certification is gonna have to be up as a plant operator. However, he took, took the initiative to check me out a little bit and I already have those capabilities within my licensing. So, that's not gonna require any other training or anything to operate this. Once, he was explaining that once it's here, we're gonna run a drive around where it's at. And learn as much as we can about it. Once it gets here, uh, he's got me on board to move this thing. And, uh, it's gonna be kind of difficult, some of these, some of these parts are forty feet long. So, you know, and with the rally and, you know, you're looking at over length and over width and over height, the permits will scare you to death, you know, so by dismantling and bringing it in, parts and pieces, we can get away from that. Those extra permits. He's on board with that and I've made several trips up there and looked the stuff over. Cal was there, you were there, I mean, uh, seen the preliminary part of it. So, it, it's gonna be a huge asset to the town to get it here and get it in operation. And he's, I kinda refer to him as the cavalry, you know. He come in and scooped up all the problems that we got and working through them and, you know, not free, but, you know, getting there, getting this out of hot water.
Well, I'd like to thank you for working with him and...
Well, it's been a good experience.
Good, glad to hear that.
He's, uh, interested in my comments and one thing or other, so, it's working out good.
Good, Cal, did you have something? Excuse me Chuck, did you have something?
I'd just like to echo what Chuck says and, um, any, any money spent, uh, with Vanish and using Anthony as our engineers, money will spend, so.
And we've been working pretty close with Terry to on the financing and how that all comes together. But, moving this thing is not gonna be cheap.
Yeah.
You know, but it's an alternative that we have to face. I mean, being that we bought it, we gotta get it here, so that's another issue.
Yep, yep.
Anyway, that's not all of that.
Okay.
I, I kinda brought up the, the issue with the sewer and, uh, the problem when we'll do some smoke testing around town and try to get a handle on that if there's something else going on. You know, and there were a two-stage complaint to throw me under the bus and one thing or another, but, you know, once we do the smoke test, we just had people in here that cleaned and camered. And if there was any real, real issues, we would've addressed that. You know, that's why we have the tape recorder of every inch that we done, you know. We did like four thousand feet.
Right.
So, anyway, that's, I think that's about it. Open work orders we're having on. Since we do have another leak in our trailer park. So, back in the day when they put that stuff in, they put it all in and then pulled the trailer over. So, when you have a problem, you gotta dig under the trailer, so we're gonna try to address that tomorrow.
You be careful with the heat tomorrow, and I, I know you, all of you came in just hotter than Hades, I apologize for that, but be careful with the heat tomorrow when you're working on that.
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Chuck very much. We appreciate your work. Yep, we appreciate your work. Ma'am, do, is there something we need to address?
No, we're good.
Okay.
Um, I was asked, I'd asked to be put on the agenda and it didn't get put on there, or it got removed and you started the meeting a half hour early, so it's not a big deal.
What?
What was the agenda?
What was the agenda?
It was the, the state had asked me to reach out to you guys regarding the status of your drinking water funding. So, but it's not a big deal, um, you'll figure it out.
Okay.
You get letters from the state, so it's not a big deal. They, they're asking, they're calling for your funds, um, your drinking water, 'cause it was funded two years ago. And you haven't done anything with it. And so, obviously, they, they want you to revert the funds. They won't take it immediately, you've already lost your arca dollars, so you have a project that isn't fully funded. You've already lost your ARCA dollars, so you have a project that isn't fully funded. And, you know, obviously I'll be explaining that to Custer County tomorrow. It sounds like Anthony's come up with a new project, but with state funds, you cannot change the scope of a project. So, yeah, your funds are in jeopardy, but it's, I mean, you can, you can do what you, do what you want. I mean, they will pull the funds, they've already pulled your ARCA grant. You lost that cause you didn't meet any of the deadlines for it. But, yeah, so I don't know. I mean, it's obviously not on your agenda. I was asked to put on your agenda. It wasn't put on the agenda.
I'm so sorry, ma'am.
So, no, not a big deal. And again, we're here to help. Our services don't cost you anything. When the state asks us to come out and show up at a meeting and we're not put on the agenda, that's probably going to reflect poorly for you moving forward when you go and ask them for funds. But it's not like you're in great standing anyway because you're...
And so can we have a special meeting with you then?
You certainly can.
Okay.
Yeah, just let me know what works for you.
Are you local in the area?
Yeah, we're from Rapid City.
We're from Rapid City?
We actually did all the applications for you, like all of your state water planning, SRF, American Recovery Plan Act. We do all of those again. The city doesn't pay us for those services. We have a joint cooperative agreement with the state to do that work. Obviously, you're more than welcome to pay somebody to do that, but there is a free service available to you if you want to utilize us. And you've been working with us for over twenty-two years.
Black Hills.
Black Hills Councilwoman Bill Lass.
Bill Lass, yes.
Yes. So, yes, you retire in December. I have a very new point of contact.
Okay. All right. Do you have her number and I'll give you a call and set something up hopefully soon.
Yeah, I mean, it might be good policy for the city if you're going to not put somebody, if somebody's been asked to be placed on the agenda and you're going to either not put them on or start them in a half hour early, maybe reach out and notify. It could, it could've saved us quite a bit of time if they did not come down.
I apologize. The executive session, the reason we started early was for executive session. And it, that was just done just last night, just right in time of the twenty-four hour notice period. But I will definitely give you a call.
Sure.
Okay?
All righty, thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna move forward on this, not on that, but on, finance officer. So this is, it's your turn now.
Okay, so I don't have any monthly financials, I'll have that for the next meeting. As far as the department updates, just some information, nothing we're gonna vote on. So last week there was a leak downstairs. It was, we found water in the mechanical room. So we had somebody come look at it and it's, of course, the air conditioning unit. And so we got a bid just today, a proposal, nine thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars. So just...
Who's that from?
From DNR, so they're the ones that worked on it, so.
To fix it or to put in a new?
Yeah, well, it's to provide, install a heat, a heat pump. Two and a half ton, fifteen sear heat pump. Cause apparently it's rusting out of the bottom, is that what?
Yeah, I looked at it and it's been over a period of time. The condensation line has plugged into some of the plumbing and I don't know if it's plugged or what's happened, but that condensation water is not getting away, so it had been sitting in the bottom of the unit, so it's rusty. I don't know if it requires a whole new unit, but you know how they are. I probably should look at it a little...
Please do.
A little harder and see what, take Calhoun down with him and say, look.
Yeah.
That'd be you.
Calhoun. For nine thousand dollars, I'd look pretty hard.
I, I'll just put forth, even though, you know, it might be a conflict of interest, I could do it for half that money.
Just saying.
Well, our air conditioner, they want nine thousand, fix it, and we got it done for twenty-five, so.
What is the comment? I mean, everything's nine thousand. Really, come on. All right, well, please look at it. Cal, please look at it. I would appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, next.
The other, so the next meeting date is September third, which is the Tuesday after...
Memorial Day.
Labor Day. So just, I don't know if anybody thinks, I mean, we do have to approve the budget at that first meeting in September is my only... But it was just kinda broad. Maybe, do we need to move it or do we need to keep it the same? I mean, I have no preference, so.
How, how does the board feel about that? How does the attorney feel about that?
I'm not aware that I'm gonna be out of town, but being a long weekend, maybe I'll go visit one of my daughters. Maybe it'd be safe to have it on Wednesday or Thursday.
Aren't these correct?
Can't read, what's it say?
Yeah, what do we move the budget meeting to?
To the third.
The twenty-second and then the twenty-seventh.
It says right on here, B O T, six P M, B O T on the tenth, so you mustn't.
Oh, I didn't write that on there.
It would've been the third and the seventeenth.
Yeah, right. I didn't write those on there.
And that's also, but I know that we changed these, that's why I was asking.
So we're having our first budget meeting this week, the twenty-second. And then we chose next week, the twenty-seventh, and then the twenty-ninth if needed.
Okay, so this one is correct.
Yeah, cause I just wrote that on there today. Well, I don't, this is on these calendars or...
Looks like the same writing to me.
Before me, so.
This looks like the same writing and writing to me.
No, see, it's this, no, it's not my writing. I didn't write the B O T on there, I wrote the, I wrote this on there. But this one's got...
Okay.
So third and seventeenth.
Is our normal meeting.
Normally, yeah.
Normal meeting. So what we're asking is because it's the day after Labor Day, if we want to change that meeting to... Well, I mean, we could do it the following weeks and, and...
Well, because we're doing here, all this here.
This one is wrong too. Because it would've been the first and fifteenth and...
I didn't...
Here it says the third and the seventeenth. But it doesn't matter what any of this says. What I'm asking is if, if any of the board members, what they would prefer seeing Talley so close to the holiday. Cal?
I can make it just fine, so.
Doesn't matter to you?
I don't have an opinion either.
You don't have an opinion?
Whatever works for everyone else.
I, I'm just thinking about her because she has to do the budget meeting, our budget, you know, the paper, getting ready because we're still, whether or not we have to do...
What do you want, Harry?
We still have to do...
Well, if we have to do the...
Yeah, right.
Yeah. And then it is, like I said, it's your off work on Monday. And so getting the agenda ready is...
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, cause, I mean, we should pretty much have the budget lined up by the twenty-nine, even after the twenty-seventh, so that'll give me, and then I'll, you know, of course, get the packet ready, but Jill can always help me with that, so.
So you'd have the twenty-eighth, the twenty-ninth, and the thirtieth?
Yeah, we do a payroll, sort of, but I'll do payroll probably here, Tuesday, so. Get that done early in the week and then...
Right.
Yeah, I mean, but I mean, if you wanna move it, I mean, it's...
Well, if we moved it, I cannot do Wednesday nights, so it would have to be Thursday night or the, or change Tuesdays, right. Have it be the second and fourth Tuesday of the month rather than the first and the third.
No, I just gotta look at the dates is what I was really looking at.
So...
I think Tuesday, just regular times, if there's not a problem with it else, I'll just, I'll just keep that. Sometimes you go an entire week ahead, it kinda messes people's plans and stuff.
Yes, I'll agree. Okay, so we'll, so just keep it?
I was just gonna say also, if you switch into the, the second and fourth week, you're still gonna eventually have two meetings in a row, so.
Well, it doesn't, you know.
Why not do it right after that? So it's not...
It doesn't matter. I have been, I just have to tell you, you're worth it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I think I'd be fine, so.
Okay.
Third and seventeenth.
Third and seventeenth, correct. Okay, very good. Next.
And then the only other department update I had is, so Shannon's got a laptop, or will have one. So she could attend meetings by electronic means if she wants to. The question arises on the software to, to provide those, cause what I have found is Teams, Zoom, they only provide that first hour free and then you have to purchase some kind of software. And when, in reaching out to Golden West, the cheapest I could find, cause we have Teams with our computers here at the office and, and of course, we have the Microsoft Office three sixty-five, which gives you the Word, Excel and all that. And it's twelve fifty a month for that. We can do a lower version of that for four dollars a month, so we're forty-eight dollars a year. And that's the cheapest I've found. I don't, I know there's some Zoom out there and you thought maybe you could get it cheaper and I don't...
Well, I think Zoom is kinda like Facebook versus, what's the other one? MySpace or something. Everyone knows Facebook, everyone knows Zoom. I don't really know meetings. But I know it's cheaper if you pay for the annual amount. But my feeling is if you happen to ordinance that you can attend Zoom and we're looking for the future to allow citizens to attend Zoom, then we ought to be able to make it available and more for than just an hour. I gotta say, when I got that kicked off and onto the phone, I really couldn't hear much of anything. So we really gotta do something. I kinda feel that's the town's responsibility if they're gonna have the ordinance.
Ordinance that says that.
Well, if you're gonna be on the town board, why wouldn't you want, you miss a lot.
When you're not here.
Yeah, when you're not here. There's other, there's comments made and different things. And I mean, I think the Zoom is just for, it's not a, you shouldn't be using it all the time because if you're on the trustee, then you need to be attending the meetings.
I don't think I ever implied that I was going to use it as a crutch or start attending that instead. That was never the, I wanted a computer to have here at the office because I type faster than I write. I will only use Zoom if I have to use Zoom. But regardless of what you think, it's already an ordinance, so unless you vote to remove it, that's not even for discussion.
Well, and it can't be voted...
It's an ordinance, so you ought to support.
It's only an ordinance to, to allow you to attend the meeting via electronic means. It doesn't say that they're going...
And you're the meeting holder, so you have to pay for it.
But it doesn't say that we pay for that. I mean, my, that's how I, I don't interpret it, that it says we do the cost of that. I don't know.
I'm gonna pass it to Ken. I'm not getting into legal things, but what I do know is this was...
That was just done last October, last year.
I didn't even think it was that long ago, so to change the ordinance, we have to wait till October, first off. Second off, I guess it's something, I, I don't mind the fact, I'll be with you in just a minute, Joe. I don't mind the fact that we can attend some of them via Zoom. I, I think that's a, a good thing. It is, I think we all know that you get more information and more, more done while you're sitting here, you know.
I don't prefer to be here.
Right, and, but it's nice to be able to attend when you're sick or whatever, to be able to listen at least and hear what's going on. Would you pass that to Ken, please? And, but, but I think that in the future, I, I think we need to make this available to all citizens. But it, it's a financial thing and we can look at that in the budgets and see if it's within the means and it may not be this year, you know, but...
Well, and for a minimal fee, you're allowing up to, say, fifty participants. So then you would just post, you know, whatever, with the link, first, yeah, first fifty available.
And that's, and that would be for forty-eight dollars a year?
Well, if we did the four dollar, we did the Teams, the four dollars, it's unlimited group meetings for up to thirty hours per month and up to three hundred participants per meeting.
See, that's huge. And that's a really small fee. You could find that anywhere.
That's Teams, the essential Teams.
And so, the, the person on the other side, you know, I'm not, you know, so I can use my phone to do that with?
Yes.
I don't have to pay for anything or have any special things on my phone?
You probably need the app.
It'll send you a link and you can, like, it comes through email. You click on the link, it'll ask you to join the meeting. They'll ask you to put in the meeting ID or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, Joe?
Well, two things. First, it's a simple office expense. I mean, you're talking about...
Minimum.
Twenty bucks a month max, and that's with Zoom and a hundred people probably. Which, I mean, I don't even see the problem here. But the second thing being is that we tried to use Teams in this office and no one could get on. The people other side were having problems, we had problems. It was a constant headache. And then before the meeting could even start, we had to call and ask them to switch to Zoom and send new invites because, and we weren't, you know, we, promotion was not the only problem. Other people attending the meeting were having problems. So I, my personal preference is Zoom because it's widely accepted.
Yeah, reliable.
And reliable, yeah, that's the perfect word. But as far as cost, my goodness, twenty dollars a month and you're paying how many thousands for software? I mean, it's, it's just part of your office expense in my opinion.
I agree.
Okay.
Did you hear that?
I, I heard that. I agree. I, I, I heard that, yes.
It was kinda quiet. I agree.
I'd rather not controversialize that.
I don't know, I mean, if we were, I mean, we're eventually gonna have to go down that route, but when we do, we should invest in some better equipment for the citizens to be able to hear us and any remote board members to be able to hear us, such as maybe, you know, a camera out there that could capture us and then local microphones for every spot here, as well as a couple of microphones out there so they could catch public commentary. But likely those would have to be unmuted and unmuted just so it doesn't catch the rustling and things like that and whispering and whatever else. So that's just my only comment.
Okay.
Is that something you could price out for us?
Yeah.
If you have your head.
Yeah, can look at that.
Good. So we'll leave this thought pending until we have more information.
Well, even without the equipment, I mean, one doesn't require the other.
Yeah. The, what I was told is that if we would've used our cellphone up here rather than the office phone, that you would've been able to hear much better. And so, I mean...
Back when I was at Mayo and I had to do, yeah, we were using, I think, your cellphone over here and Dan's down at the other end.
Yeah.
To catch everyone.
So we will do that the next time and, and we'll see if we can't get the other, get it all worked out.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Next.
Okay, and then the only other thing is, so we talked about that initiated, initiated measure twenty-eight about the, the food tax maybe possibly being taken away. I did get some more information from the South Dakota Municipal League, cause they had referred it to their attorneys because there was some question about the legality, but it even was, it was unconstitutional for a city, for a town to, to do a resolution. And they came back with their opinion that said it's, it's not unconstitutional for the town to adopt a resolution stating to support that and that it was just more educational, so. And so they did give us, and there is an example of a resolution in your packet that we would, if we would decide we have to do that. We could do that, so. So it's just more of an information thing for you guys to think about.
Shannon, you had a comment question?
Just comment, another attorney, Joe. So he's got two pages of a letter and really it's just in the end, "In conclusion, I do not believe proposed resolution as written violates the statute." That was the only sentence we needed.
Okay. All right.
I thought that was kinda even.
It's kinda funny. Well, that's it. That's a attorney for you, isn't it?
Right. That's why they charge three hundred and seventy-five.
That's right. Exactly.
Put these poor guys out of business.
I'll write the two pages so we can give it to you to review, so you can review the two pages and apply.
Austin one-on-one, man.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Well, we, I, I, I think it's, the more we support this, the better off we are. And I know I brought it up at the last meeting and... And but if a resolution will help, I believe we should do it.
I think it's great how it shows the annual lost revenue, the collected amount and the lost amount. So people can actually see how much we're gonna have to find somewhere else. Because that's a huge amount. I remember it being like, I don't know, 212,000 or something way back when?
I think I heard 50,000 for sure.
Maybe it was 21,000. That was 10 years ago, I don't know. Well, the tax hasn't changed a little bit, more people.
It just, it would be a hardship for all small towns in our state, for sure. So, all right. So you can work on that?
Yep.
Thank you.
I could probably work with Kent on getting, filling out that resolution. Would that be?
Grab something up.
They have an example, so that was in the packet we could use.
Yeah, some of that.
Okay, great. That brings us to old business. Update on gravel on Tower Road. Do I have new information about that?
No.
No? Nothing?
Well, I talked to him a little bit about what he's expecting to be down there. He wants to rip sick engine out of there and put large road base down and then put other road base on top of it. And we're still talking about it. I mean, it isn't chiseled in stone yet, what's gonna happen there? But the other side of the coin is that if we attempt to raise the water pressure there off an existing line there, then it's gonna be done right there.
It's gonna be dug up right there?
It doesn't make sense to tear it all up.
Did you explain that to him?
Yes.
And how does he feel about waiting a little longer?
Well, his biggest concern of all the issues that was agreed upon, nothing's getting done. You know, and that includes Tom West and the right of way and no grass and lots of things. I'm getting with Anthony and we'll discuss what's enough to do there. Because if we can booster everything on right next to that road, that's gonna help a lot. It's not gonna do anything for the ones on the other side unless we dedicate a line to go over there. Because then we'll be pressurizing more than just pull some court and.
Okay.
I've got to discuss.
More discussion then?
Well, I need to go over to get all what Anthony, what procedure should be.
Okay, that's good, thank you. That brings us to new business. A, accept the resignation of Vicki Hendrickson effective August 6th, can be effective today. I need a motion in that effect?
I think a motion that we accept her resignation.
Motion's been made.
All right, seconded.
It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, thank you. B, advertise for letters of interest for the vacant board position. So we need to do that now that we have accepted the resignation. So do we need a motion stating that we need to do it? I don't think we do, do we? Just, we just do it, Kent?
Last time you put in a by 12 noon on a Wednesday or something.
Oh. Well, we probably do want to put a time limit on it. So, sorry, but we want to get this done, so.
Make it 5:00 PM on a something or.
Okay, 5:00 PM?
Two of them got kicked out because.
Well, because of it.
And if you mail it the day before, you're gonna get it the next day, so.
Well, generally, yeah. So.
Or two days, yeah.
Well, we want to do, do we want to do this within the next two weeks by our next board meeting? Okay, so we want the paperwork then in by 5:00 on the 29th, Thursday, the 29th. So that it can be in the.
September.
Nope. Oh, I'm.
I think you better go on.
At least, don't you? You think I need?
It's the 21st here already. You need to, I would say, go with it.
Putting it on the back of water bills? I mean, what are we doing with Facebook?
Well, definitely, I don't know if there'll be room on the back of the water bill, but that's not a bad idea.
I think we're adding something else on there.
But it'll be on Facebook. We can put the notices out. I don't know. You want to wait till the next meeting?
Yeah, I think we should go.
Okay, so then it would need to be in by the 12th at 5:00 PM. Written letters of interest.
Yeah, and I'd say that letters may be submitted via US mail electronically or hand delivered.
Okay. Very good. Anything else?
Say if you're, well, that's for the packets, is that why, the 12th?
That's what we like to have.
If you're doing it Thursday, you might as well do Friday.
Yeah, we always try to give it a, you know, give. We don't need them coming in at 1:00 to 5:00 on a Friday night.
Well, it's a letter of interest. All you're going to do is copy it and put it in. Right, so I mean, even if they hand delivered it by the meeting on the 10th, I don't see the problem.
There ain't no meeting on the 10th.
Well, whenever it is, 17th, sorry.
I remember you erased it.
Kelly, go ahead.
If the purpose is to be able to vote on those letters at the meeting after they're due, then you can't really turn them in right before the meeting because we have to be able to put the letters in the agenda and then.
Read them.
And decide on who personally we would like to vote in there. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Your letters will be on the agenda to review letters of interest?
Yeah, we don't have to have specific individuals on there.
They might be in your packet, but.
Well, they can't be in the packet unless we have them by the other Thursday.
Yeah.
Right, they could be in your packet.
Okay, I'm still gonna say Thursday.
Where you don't see it until you open it.
Okay, Thursday, 5:00, done.
That's the 12th still.
The 12th, yes.
Yeah, the 12th. For the 17th, is that what?
Yeah, correct, correct. Okay.
I'm just trying to learn everything.
Yes, I know, that's good. C, 2024 Christmas Parade, motion to approve Highway 40 on December 14th, 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. This is.
Who's doing it?
Something that, oh, I don't, it's not the coffee shop that Hermosa connects, it's not them.
So why, I mean, what, is it an organization or what? I mean, do I have that information on that packet?
Yeah, it's the very last page. The application was filled out by Breezy Simpson. Apparently, she's been trying to do this for some time and.
Well, I think it's a great idea. If somebody wants to take it on and take the time and the energy to make it happen, I think that's a great thing. Personally, any little thing we can do in our town, I think, is wonderful. So Kelly, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I was just wondering, why is it coming to us if it's a Highway 40 issue? Didn't we run into the same deal when we talked about the fair parade as well? Where we basically just got a informational letter from the DOT saying that they're gonna have this permit?
But they had asked for the town to approve that.
Oh, okay. So that's what we're doing there?
That's what they had, the DOT.
The DOT does.
Had in their notes that had to be approved by the town.
Approves DOT first, not the town.
Well, I would say, I think, am I, we all in agreement if DOT approves it? Are we all in agreement? That way we can give our support to the situation. I think, like I said, I think it's wonderful.
So when is this?
I could be helpful to know the organization.
December 14th.
That is half a four days.
Saturday.
That is a Saturday, correct.
Must be like a parade of lights or something.
That would be my guess. So, yeah, I mean, we could ask for more information from her and tell her that she has our blessings and that we, she has to go to the.
Because the one we got from the fair actually has the bottom part completed by the DOT.
By the DOT.
So I think they probably do need to fill that out.
Which that reminds me, I would like this to be known also. That was at the last board meeting when we discussed this and this permit was given to us for the fair. And Mr. Stiles commented that we should have a copy of that. His signature was on it from a year ago. And that he made, he made it well-known that he signed that. He said it many, many times. Fact of the matter is, it doesn't get signed. It was just an approval. His signature wasn't on it, it didn't need to be on it. And I just wanted to clarify that not any of us have a perfect memory or recollection of all things that have happened.
Is that kind of CRS?
Well, yeah, probably. But yes, I would like to give our blessings to her for that. And would like to find out, please, give us more information. What is it gonna entail? Is it gonna be?
Just because we're curious.
Well, we're curious. Well, I mean, if it's floats, you know, do we want to float for the town? I mean, you know, there's all kinds of things to think about there. So, yes, Deb?
Yeah, it is a float. She did approach me and ask me if I would help with it.
Okay.
She's dug her feet in, but she wants to have approval lights, like Keystone, Hill City. Maybe get the, she went to Hermosa connects, because I guess she came up here to see if she can get some information. And they said, well, you need to go talk to Hermosa connects. She's made numerous attempts to get a hold of them. They never returned her calls, so she just took the bull by horn and did her herself.
Good for her.
And it could be good for the town.
It could be.
Community Center would like to set up, I guess, some stuff in their little building, the cell or whatever over Christmas time. And I don't know, I'm gonna shut my lights off when the parade comes through, but, you know.
Okay, thank you, Deb. All right, that takes care of everything that's on the agenda, except for items from citizens. Do we have any comments from the citizens? Everybody's quiet, they had enough, they waited outside in the heat and it's been an hour and a half past that and they want to go home. Thank you all for coming, I appreciate it. Trustee input? Oh, Deb?
I did have one thing. I know that the, just the girls that were here, they were outside and they did say that they contacted the town office to be on the agenda. And I believe she said she did talk to you.
She did talk to me, yeah.
And so, yeah, they were.
But then, and I'll take responsibility, I did, but then I talked to Anthony and he didn't believe she was correct in stating that the state was gonna pull our funds. So that's where the confusion was. So then I didn't, because I don't know where we're really at. And she'd only contacted them one time and then she was gonna be on the road and I never heard from her again, so, yeah.
Well, we'll have to get to the bottom of that too, folks. That was a shocker for me. And like I said, I will call her and get some more information. Okay? Trustee input? And then we'll go into a short executive session. Yes, Kelly?
So after they said their piece and left, I texted Anthony and let him know. Because he actually mentioned that to me before that, I don't know how, I don't remember how he heard word of it.
I sent it to him.
Okay, well, Terry sent it to him. And he was telling me that they were saying we lost our funding, but we didn't actually. And so, and I just texted him. Yeah, I just, yeah.
She was, that's all she was with her email, too. I talked to her on the phone and she was, she was pretty rude to me.
Okay, Kelly, go finish, please.
Okay, so his reply is, let the board know that I have written confirmation from DNR that we did not lose our drinking water funding, but we, we'll just leave it at that. Yeah, so he apparently has confirmation from DNR that we are good to go on that. And so, I mean, we can just have that letter and, do you have that letter, Terry?
I don't, but I'll get it from Anthony.
Yeah, well, we'll get that from Anthony and we can send it to him and say, well, you know, or maybe not or just see what they do. But I don't know if we necessarily need to have anybody go into DNR against us, you know, considering our history with them, but.
Yes, agreed.
That's solely input on that.
Okay, all right. Any other trustee input? I have a question, Greg. Is there a reason you're here tonight?
Sometime, and Chuck knows this already and Terry, of course, sometime in September, I'm going to be talking about a plot application. And it just seemed to be that it would be a good idea to at least sit in the audience and see kind of who new members are on the board and that's all.
Okay. Can I ask a question? Is that for the property down at the end of Donna Street or the first?
It's the property on which Mark and Don Preble lived for some years. And unfortunately, they weren't able to make a go under contract and so. My stepson hopes to build a house and so, work in that direction. But that was the only reason, it just seemed like, yeah, it would be a good idea for me to do.
Well, thank you for coming, Greg. I hope it wasn't.
Seriously, I had no idea you were, I will take the opportunity to say, I had no idea. Last time I was here was Mitch Johnson. And it was a year and a half ago, I think, or something like that. But I think having some, having some knowledge of municipal law helps the municipality.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. So on that note, I would like to thank everybody for coming and hope to see you all at the next meeting. We do have budget meetings coming up, the public is welcome to them also. So feel free to, feel free to join us for those. On that note, I would like a motion to go into executive session at 8:12. Oh, my goodness, I'm sorry, folks. 8:12, motion, please?
I make a motion, we go and take executive session.
And a second, please.
Yep, a second.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. We'll take just a moment.
I make a motion that we exempt.
First, we gotta have a second to the motion to come out of executive session?
Oh, I make a motion that will come out of it. I already did.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So through our executive session, we will be making one motion. The motion concerns the town attorney.
Should we see if there's anybody out?
Oh, there is. Deb was coming, wanted to come back in. I forgot. Thank you for thinking of that. And it takes all of our brains together to remember everything, I swear.
I heard you were out here. Oh, well, I don't know.
We can't, I'm sorry, Deb. I am sorry.
You only missed a motion to come out of the document anyway.
Yeah, you didn't miss anything.
So there is a motion to be made coming out of executive session concerning our town attorney. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we hire Kent Hag based on his amended proposal that was handed over tonight.
Okay. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion?
Does that need any other detail?
Yeah, I think we should put the detail where he, because the letter had the original amounts that he quoted and then he quoted lighter, uh, lower amounts tonight verbally.
Yeah, I said the amended amount, he gave her a.
Oh, he did, he did give her, okay, sorry.
Did you get it? You're the only one that has it, okay. I'll find it, I'll give it to you.
All right, sorry, yeah. Because the only, the only thing that I saw that was on paper was the one.
The higher amount.
Yeah, previously, so.
Have to go through every thing in here, right here. And he did initial each of those price changes. All right, then there we go. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Donna. I know I asked a lot of you tonight. I know it's tough, I appreciate it, thank you. Motion to adjourn at 8:35.
Well, you know. Well, you know, and the DOT guy, they, they were very nice, very nice. And they did come down and look at it.
Two seconds.
I didn't know they came down and looked at it. And he said, you know, the sad.
All those in favor?
All those in favor, aye. I'm sorry. 8:35, I think I said it was. Thank you, Shannon.